Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Baines.
Here.
Brettafeld.
Here.
Capriolio.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Olivier. Brandau.
Here.
And Soria.
Here.
So would we all please stand for the flag salute? So we have a full agenda this morning. We will be hearing from our city clerk's office, city attorney's office, transportation department, city council offices, mayor and city manager's offices. Before we start, city clerk, I'm going to actually call up our budget analyst just to... I know that there are some questions that have arisen over the last 24 hours. And so I know that there are some council members that have some questions. There was some information that we all received late afternoon after the budget hearings yesterday.
President, Soria, I would suggest that we take care of our business first because we have all the co-employees, if you will, our fellow workers out in the audience, if we could conclude our items first and then we could address this at the end of the day. This, I don't think, will directly affect anything. So it gives us time for our people to be heard and back to their offices.
And I appreciate your suggestion. I think that there is a desire to kick it off with our budget analysts. I think that it will help inform our decisions and the discussion that happens with the other budget departments. So, thank you. Wayne, I know that there's a couple of council colleagues that wanted to ask some questions about some information that was shared yesterday afternoon in regards to sales tax or additional sales tax money in the amount close to $10 million. And so maybe if you can just kind of give us some background information from the information that you've gathered.
Certainly, President Soria. Good morning, counsel. Wayne Padilla, your budget analyst. And the issue that we're addressing is the practice of the city and its methods for recognizing revenues. Sales tax revenues come to public agencies and installments. And essentially, it's taken the current method of apportionment, takes three payments before all of the sales taxes from a particular timeframe are received by an agency. What we're addressing in the memo in question is the taxes that relate to the sales period. So taxpayers are collecting taxes through the end of June. And it currently takes three payments to receive all of that money. Under the proposed budget methodology of recognizing sales tax, the installment for July has been recognized and deemed the end of the payment stream for the current fiscal year. What's been indicated in the memo is that additional revenues are received in August, and those would total approximately $9.9 million as a current estimate. And the question is, should those be recognized as part of the proposed budget? When you make this change to identify revenues from an additional period, the caution is that this is an addition of revenues on a one-time basis. So if you think about it, the payment stream that's currently being recognized by the city is from August of 2017 through July of 2018. But the memo indicates is that if you add a second August to the timeframe, so August 2018, additional revenues would be recognized. And again, this is on a one-time basis because in the future, your payment streams would begin with September and end in August. So 12 payments. Making the change, you add a 13th payment to the stream, and that gives you the one-time So going forward, you have 12 payments, but you're shifting the timeframe forward accordingly. So, President Soria, are there any other questions or issues I might be able to address?
Perfect. There's a couple of my colleagues that are punched up. So councilmember Brettafeld?
Yes, so Wayne, question. This was money received August of 2017.
This would be monies to be... These are monies that would be received August 2018.
August 2018. And are you suggesting that these are funds that should be reflected in this budget?
What I'm indicating is that there's the possible shift... The city has the option of changing its methodology so that it recognizes all of the sales tax for a given fiscal year by recognizing all the payments, even those that come in beyond July. So it's not so much a recommendation to make a change that is being brought forward as to say, "This is a possibility," and let the council and administration decide where to take it.
What has been the history with these kinds of payments, the August payments received in sales tax in terms of reflected in a budget? What's the history? Is this something new? That's what I'm trying to get at.
So the history is August since 2012, the 2012 fiscal year, August has been recognized in the budget as the first of the 12 payments. So it's not that you've never recognized August before, and this is something new. It's simply the timing for the start of payments recognized in the fiscal year began with August in the following year. So under the scenario of the proposed 2019 budget, August 2018 is considered the first payment of the 2019 fiscal year.
And should have been, in your opinion, should have been reflected in this budget?
Yes. Essentially, it could have been. Again, it's an option. It's revenues that apply to the fiscal year. So again, I'm not suggesting or advocating for the change. I'm simply pointing out that it is a policy call on behalf of the council and administration to decide whether that change should be made.
When you say "change," I thought you were saying that... Well, maybe I need to ask the city manager. City manager, has the August receipts been included in similar type budgets like this where we should... This should have been included in this budget? Is this something new where it wasn't included, or is it something that has been included in our budget?
There are 12 months' worth of revenue, sales tax revenue, acknowledged in this budget. There are always 12 months' worth of sales tax revenue acknowledged in a budget. This, if it is approved, is a policy change, as Mr. Padilla has pointed out. This is a one-time infusion because it is a change in the methodology as to how the city accrues its sales tax. It is not increasing sales tax. We are not acknowledging money that was not acknowledged in the five-year because this money that is in question has been acknowledged within the scope of the five-year plan. It's simply when you are going to acknowledge it. Are you going to acknowledge it in '19, or are you going to acknowledge it in the following fiscal year? It is not new money. It is not money that's just been sitting around. It will be acknowledged in the city's budget and has been within the five-year plan.
When was it going to be acknowledged, since it's not acknowledged in this budget?
It was going to be acknowledged in the fiscal year following FY '19 because that's when the 12 months of revenue would have been acknowledged for that time period. So right now, as Mr. Padilla pointed out, we acknowledge revenues from August through July. Now, if this goes through, we will acknowledge revenues from September through August. That's all that it means.
Would that be a change the way that we typically...
Yes, it is.
So typically, it's been August through July?
That is correct. It is 12 months' worth of revenue because we must acknowledge 12 months' worth of revenue because we have 12 months in the fiscal year.
And that's the way it's been the last five years, or it's always been that?
That is the way it's been since FY 2012, when it was done in a, if I may say, a desperate attempt to keep the city from going bankrupt and to acknowledge that we needed to protect services and to protect our employees for at least one more year, and in the hopes that perhaps sales tax would begin to recover in FY '13. It didn't, not to any great extent, but it was an effort that was made at the time.
Okay. And before FY '12, was it...
It was from July through June.
Okay.
Councilmember Brandau.
This microphone on. All right. Thank you, Wayne. You know, thank you for working this up. I know that council members have been asking you about... I mean, you're the council member's budget analyst, so we appreciate that. The $10 million, the way I'm viewing this, and let me know if I'm on the right path here or if I'm... It doesn't feel like it was hidden money, or it seems to me like it is a budgeting tool that, if used, allows for $9.9 million to be put into the play of this year's budget. But I don't think it was just sitting there hidden. It doesn't seem like it was sitting there hidden. It was only hidden because it would require all of us to make a decision to change the way our budget is reported regarding sales tax. Is that right?
You're exactly right, Councilman Brandau. In the fiscal sustainability plan that was adopted specifically in 2012, this point was referenced, that the staff was very clear in making the recommendation to make the shift to incorporate the July payment to acknowledge the additional revenue at that point. And they were quite explicit at the time about what that meant and what their practices were. So taken from that, no, this was not something... Again, that was a change in policy that council enacted. It was very well-vetted in the document explaining what was happening. And so, no, this was not hidden in any way.
Okay. And then you keep talking about this being a one-time opportunity. Is it... I mean, what stops councils next year, the following year, from moving it to September, to October, to November? Or does it have to stop with August?
It would have to stop with August. Your revenue recognition is limited to the recognition of revenues for a particular year. And I need to correct my earlier statement. The timeframe it would be looking at would be August of 2019 would be the additional revenue picked up, not 2018.
Okay.
But August is the last payment that applies to the prior fiscal year. It's that last opportunity to what we call accruing revenue for the prior year from the sales tax source. So that's why it would stop.
Okay. So it truly... So it was allowed to happen in 2012 to move it off of July into August?
To move it off of June to July.
Into July. Okay. And it could be used this last time, but then in the future, it wouldn't really be available because August is the last month that includes the prior year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's very interesting to me. And so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez.
There we go. I've got a couple of questions. So I'm hearing the conversation about the budgeting tool and the money being accounted for. I totally get that. But here's a question. And where in our actuarials is this dollar amount recognized? Is it recognized as a budgeting tool? Is it recognized as a pot of money that could be expended? Is that accounted for? Would that be accounted for in our actuarials?
Councilmember, the term "actuarial" usually... I don't know if that's really quite what you mean here, but it's accounted for in your financial statements.
Right.
Okay. So there's always been recognition in the financial statements, these dollars applying to the fiscal year in which they were earned. The difference is, and this was elaborated on in the 2012 document I was referring to a second ago, the difference is the council has a different timeframe for recognizing revenues in the budget. And currently, it's through the July payment. And this item would suggest to accelerate the recognition of the August 2019 payment to bring that one-time infusion of revenues to the city.
So if we would have invoked this a couple of years ago, and we would have put that money into the reserve, would that have sped up our credit rating for the city?
It would have definitely had a positive impact on the evaluation of the city's finances and ultimately could have had a positive benefit on the credit rating.
What's our credit rating right now? Jane?
Our credit rating, it depends on the type of debt that you're talking about, but generally speaking, I believe our credit rating is somewhere around the A on the lease revenue bonds. It's in the book. Let me check really quick.
But the bottom line is, any time your reserves are larger, credit rating agencies are going to look at you more favoritively.
Absolutely. And that was my point. That was what I was getting at because I know that the healthier your reserve is, the better your credit rating, the more savings you get as we embark on these number of expenses. And I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what that would look like. What is it, Jane?
Yeah, the credit rating on the general obligation bonds varies according to the three different rating agencies. It varies from a 3A from Moody's to an A-plus from S&amp;P. That's for the general obligation bond. For the lease revenue bonds, Moody's still has us at triple B, 1, 2. The other two have us at either A or A-plus. So they have recovered from where they were last year. I know that the refinancing of our debt had a substantial impact, positive impact on our credit rating. So that was the impetus for, I believe, some of the improvement was the refunding that was done, I believe, last year.
Well, and the reason I'm putting that on the record, and I think that'll be a conversation for this council, is that we'll eventually have this pot of money should that policy change. And I think one of the... Couple of the options should be looking at what would be the long-term savings should we decide to add to the reserve or not, or make these one-time expenditures. I think that's something that we should definitely weigh in and have a conversation about. Thank you for that, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. So I just wanted to follow up on some of the questions and comments that were made, I think, by my colleagues. You know, first, I want to thank you, Wayne, for the work that you've been doing to kind of help us navigate through the budget. And then, secondly, when I hear about, you know, the way that we are calculating our revenues or including it into our fiscal year or into our projected budget, in my perspective, I think that we should recognize them within the fiscal year that they were earned. I think, and you've probably worked with a number of cities, how do other cities do it? Is that kind of the general template that they use, that they acknowledge all the revenues within that fiscal year, and that's what they use and do their projected budgets? Is that not how they generally do it?
Most of the cities with regard to sales tax recognize what we call a 60-day accrual period. So they would recognize that August installment payment. A few go so far as to pick up... It used to take until September to get all the money. And a few would recognize a 90-day window and pick up the September payment as well. So everything applicable to a fiscal year was accounted for both within their financial statements and within... Excuse me, within their budget.
Yeah. So I don't know, I'd ask this council to really think, yes, the mayor proposes the budget, but we're the ultimate body that ends up voting and deciding whether we accept this budget. And I think in order for me to approve this budget this year, I would like to see the accounting tool change because I think it only makes logical sense that the city, you know, in terms of the sales tax dollars coming in that time period, in that fiscal year. So, you know, that's what I will submit to everyone. I will support a budget that is inclusive of all the revenues. We can decide how we want to address the one-time flow. Is it that we want to partially put it in reserves to get us to that mark that we've been striving for and then use part of it for one-time projects that wouldn't cause us to have to see ongoing expense? And I think that is a worthy conversation. But in my perspective, I'd like to see us acknowledge and recognize the entire sales tax revenues within our fiscal year for this budget and moving forward. So just curious to see what my other colleagues, if you guys have any...
Excuse me, Councilmember. I just want to point out for the record that this one-time money was acknowledged in the five-year and is acknowledged in the budgets that you would have seen going forward. This is not extra money. This is money that is programmed and revenue that is programmed within the five-year budget to pay for ongoing expenses. And so there isn't any idea of this being extra cash. This is simply a change in the methodology. You will still be acknowledging in FY '20 12 months' worth of revenue. And there will be no extra cash left.
So Jane, where is this money going to right now?
This money will be going to the general fund. It's just a matter of when it is acknowledged as being in the general fund. It was never going anywhere but the general fund.
So if we make a policy call in changing the way that we account for the dollars, then you'll have to figure out how...
We will simply move...
...get the priorities and do the financing at that, at that, at the next budget.
Yeah, we will be moving the period of revenue recognition over one more month. Although it does beg the question, I would ask to those entities that acknowledged up through September, since now the state has changed its methodology and is no longer extending that period into September, will they have to now pull back their accrual period in the year and now only accrue two months of revenue, which is going to put them under some fiscal stress because now they can no longer acknowledge that revenue in that year? That's an academic question. My apologies.
Do you have any idea?
Yes, I do. Actually, because of the change in apportionment methodology by the state, those... What cities typically would wait for revenues to come in in September, those monies are being accelerated in August, it's a moot point. It does not change their forecasting at all. It simply puts the money into the cash coffers faster.
Faster. Okay. I don't know. In my perspective, you know, and I'll wait to hear from my other colleagues, but in my perspective, I think it makes perfect logic to account for those tax dollars that are earned in that fiscal year. I think then we just have to figure out, in terms of our projections, how we adjust those numbers. We're going to now acknowledge up to August the payments. That's what I would submit to my colleagues. Councilmember Baines.
Thank you, Council President. I don't really have any questions, but if you don't want to stand there, you don't have to. I'm just kind of... Just give my thoughts on this really quick. And I certainly want to hear the mayor weigh in. He and I chatted about this a little bit. And I want to agree with Councilmember Brandau. I don't think this was a gimmick to hide any money by the administration. I think that it's been mainly in accounting methodology over the last number of years, which is, and different cities do it different ways. So however, in saying that, I think that it's an opportunity now that we see this. It is actual cash. It's not necessarily paper money, and it really are revenues that did accrue from the last fiscal year. I don't see that there's anything wrong with accounting for those dollars in this fiscal year like we do with every other dollar. So I don't see anything wrong with that. My recommendations would be to the mayor and administration, probably to work with the council. I would probably support putting that money in the reserve and really safeguarding it. But I also want to allow the administration some time to look at what some good options are and bring them back to us. I think that's fair. I think we all found out about this within the last 24 hours. But we can't pretend like it doesn't exist, so I want that to be clear. And I don't know if just continuing to do what we've always done is the right option either. So I think the answer probably lies somewhere in the middle of there because I think it's the intent of the administration to be fully transparent. I know the mayor, I know the city manager and staff, and the perception is... Can be different than the reality. And I think the reality is you all want to work with us and be transparent and get us all on the same page. And I think there's an opportunity to do that right now in this moment. So... And I think the council's really understanding. I think we would really understand and come and work with you all on what the best options are, but we need to talk about it honestly and forthrightly so that we all get to the same page. So anyway, colleagues, that's my recommendation, is to allow the administration a few days to look into this, give us some good recommendations on that. I think that we all want to work with them, but I don't think we can just go back to doing business as usual either. So, thanks.
Councilmember Brandau.
Yeah, I just wanted... Councilman Baines reminded me of something, and, Council President, you and I had talked about it. We're really not hard-pressed for time. Currently, we're supposed to vote on our budget next Thursday, but it's really the following Thursday that we have until. So we have until the 28th. That's plenty of time to figure out this use of additional money, whether we pull the trigger on it, and then how to put that money into play inside of our... So we have a little bit of time. I just want to remind everybody, we're not in a crunch. There's a couple of opportunities to continue talking about this.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor?
Hassan? Okay. First of all, I'll thank the council for their discussion. This is an important item to clarify, and there's no... Nothing here is hidden. Everything's transparent. But to understand what we're doing today, we need to know what happened in the past in the city of Fresno. And the city of Fresno has a history of making some bad fiscal practices from years where, you know, parks or police substations were built prior to bonds actually being passed to spending enterprise money on general fund that, over a period of time, that were never approved by the council and were a violation of Prop 218. And it took my time and the people that, like Oliver and Paul, that were here at this time, that we had to pay back that $36 million. In other words, you can't do anything with gimmicks. So what you have here, you know, this was... Desperate times demand desperate measures. This was 2012. The recession was full force, and for the city to basically close the books and not lay people off, they had to take this measure. And I was on the council. I know Councilman Baines and others were... We knew that. We voted for it. Quite frankly, I forgot about it. But I think the original intention of then, the Spurging administration, was eventually to pay it back, but we've never been in a position to have that money to say, "Let's go back to the July to June." And there's nothing wrong, per se, with the practice, but you've basically recognized a 13th month. And so within the budget, it's when we do a five-year budget. So within that five-year budget is $10 million. So if you pull $10 million out, it's going to roll forward to another five-year budget. It's not going to go away. And I'm not against potentially one solution being into the reserve fund. But what I would want to do is make some caution is that you've taken this money on a presumption of sales tax. The five-year budget did not include any recession, and I think there's a reasonable chance in that five-year period, there could be a recession that could adversely affect our projection on sales tax revenues. So if you're pulling money aside even into reserve, it's based on replicating that $10 million. And I know one thing that's going on right now that I'm fighting myself. It's Senate Constitutional Amendment 20 coming forward by Senator Glazier that would basically change the methodology on how we allocate e-commerce sales tax dollars from point of origin to point of destination. So our incentive agreements, particularly with the GAP and Ulta, are based on sales tax, you know, performance-based incentives. And this was actually going to go forward for a ballot issue in 2018. Myself and our other allies from other cities that have e-commerce were successful in delaying that. But this is still, as we speak, this is still going forward. It's being delayed to 2020. But if that happens and SCA 20 passes, it will dramatically impact sales tax on GAP, Ulta, any other e-commerce centers we have, and that's not even factored here. Those are the unknown variables that are out there that we've got to be cautious on. So I would say, at the very least, I would like to have our auditors, the auditors on our CAFER, to... to review this question and see what their recommendations. And maybe go to Moody's or one of the credit agencies. I think we have time within this budget cycle to get an independent announcer. And I'm not certain that adding, simply adding money to a reserve is gonna be considered to enhance our credit rating. And in fact, because of the very nature of this 13th month and rolling it forward and, you know, some smoke and mirrors, they may actually adversely affect, but I don't know that for a fact. I think the prudent thing is to get independent third parties to evaluate that. But I would say at the very least, spending the money would not be a mistake, would be a big mistake because we don't know if we can make up that money. And what we've done, if any future time there's ever a need to do this again, you've taken away that opportunity. It's a one-time deal. And I would say the only potential thing I would consider would be a move of the money into the reserve is a possibility, if that's the way it goes. But I want to caution this council, and I appreciate the job you have and how difficult it is to balance so many competing priorities out there. And I've said before, we're probably in the best financial shape we've been in years, but that's not good enough. This city does not generate the revenues necessary to pay for our essential core services, whether that's police, fire, parks, public works. We simply need to have a plan down the road. Getting there through gimmicks or one-time things is not the path I would go. I'd really give the caveat that we'd be very careful how we review this. And I appreciate the discussion, it's definitely worthy of a debate. But let's get some independent people to weigh in on this and to find a solution that's physically sound, that continues to move the city in the right directions.
Mayor, you know, with all due respect, I wouldn't call it a gimmick because this is like real cash. And so I kind of feel like a little bit disrespected when we're calling into question the information. And I think that, I appreciate your cautiousness in looking at these types of dollars. But there's a big distinction today from six years ago. There was no reserve. And I think that this council has done a tremendous amount of work. And, you know, we worked together during your time as a council member to ensure that we build this with the prior administration. So to say that, you know, that it's a gimmick for, I think it's, for me, it's not. This is real, real money that we're talking about. And then second, I think that we're in a very distinct position today from, you know, and I'm not saying let's spend the money, but I think that we really need to seriously look at how we're recognizing these dollars. And I think, you know, you mentioned that you may have forgotten about it or whatnot, but I think that the original feeling, I'll just be, you know, straightforward, it was feeling without really having the explanation that, you know, this money is not being transparent or we're not completely being transparent. So I appreciate the explanation this morning. But I think, again, that we definitely need to look at what we can do because if we look back maybe to six years and how we were recognizing the dollars, had we put these dollars, as was mentioned by my colleague, Mr. Chavez, our credit rating probably would have gone better a lot quicker. Therefore, having cost savings and being in a better position today, I would submit. So I look forward to having the discussion. I think that we have enough time to do it. But again, I would submit that this is not a gimmick, we're talking about real dollars.
Let me add one thing. The genesis of this was born from desperation. I'm not saying there was nothing illegal about it, but there's short memories at City Hall. I just want to make sure that we move down a path of fiscal responsibility.
Councilmember Brenda.
So I, and I appreciate going to third-party like Moody's, see if they can get us a quick answer, some of the other, to see if it's an impact to our city's rating. And we could also ask them in that conversation if money was put in the reserve, would that offset or help the city's rating? So I might suggest, because we only have a few short weeks before we have to take a vote on the final budget, that in the conversations with Moody's or others, maybe we need to have council at the table in any conversations. And I would suggest council president, council vice president, maybe one other council member to be in conversations about this. This is a very unique situation that we all just got informed in this morning, well, actually in an email late yesterday afternoon. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to work together to see the direction we're gonna go. So I would offer that suggestion. I don't know if my colleagues would appreciate it, but I think that council needs, at this point, council needs to be included in the conversations on this segment of the budget. Because if it was only handled on the administration and council only gets informed on the last couple of days of budget, we could see something go south that I don't think any of us want to see go south. So that's my suggestion, and that would be my advice.
I agree with you, Vice President Brenda. So if there is another, do we have to make an actual motion or?
You know, Council President, I think that the mayor could probably just say yes or no. I think he said it right here. I think Councilmember Brenda made a great suggestion. It's not, doesn't really require a vote. I think if the mayor invites you all into the conversation, he can just say yes.
Go.
Are any of the other colleagues dying to be part of the discussions? Yeah, Councilmember Chavez? Okay, perfect. So it'll be myself, Councilmember Brenda, and Councilmember Chavez. Perfect, great. So there's no one else punched up? We'll go ahead and continue on with the budget hearings. I'm gonna take things a little bit out of order. I'm gonna go with our fax department first, just so that you guys aren't here waiting. I know we have our clerk's office and attorney's office, but we'll go with our fax department.
The Transportation Department's budget starts on page B-155. Its funding sources include the Enterprise, Internal Service, and General Fund. Their total overall budget is $140.3 million, which is slightly up from FY 2018 amended. Their general fund budget is $9.4 million. Total permanent FTE positions are budgeted at $515.5, which is a 7.5 increase from last year. The department's total resources are projected at nearly $175 million, which is about $10.9 million less than FY 18 amended budget. This decrease is observed across the department's divisions. Transit operations and capital revenues are down $18.3 million. The internal service revenues are also down by $7.2 million. The decline is primarily, partially offset with a $9.1 million of general fund support for the Public Safety Maintenance Division. This general fund support for the division is not new, but rather a reallocation of resources from the Fleet Maintenance Division and the Fire Department. The department's overall appropriations are $140.3 million. It's an increase of $2.5 million. The appropriations include $102 million for transit operating and capital, $28.6 million for their internal service funds, and $9.4 million for their general fund specifically related to the Public Safety Maintenance Division. Transit Operations has a budget of $58.6 million. That's an increase of $1.4 million. Within Transit Operations, their personal appropriations is increasing by $847,300, which primarily is comprised of step advancements and negotiated union contractual increases. Non-personal increases are $730,700. Within this increase includes $300,000 increase for outside legal services, $120,000 for a revenue collection contract with Garda Armored Truck to collect fare revenue from ticket vending machines, $332,300 increase to account for an additional 5% built into the contract with Keola's Transit America. And this is in regards to para-transit services. Lastly, there's $100,000 increase for new fare media to be dispensed at ticket vending machines. For their internal department charges, there's a decrease of $218,900. For example, there's $181,300 reduction to the facility's management charges, of which $123,200 was a transfer from non-PERS accounts as the department will be assuming responsibility for janitorial duties at some of its facilities. On page B-159, the Fleet Services Unit is, will include a Public Safety Fleet Management Unit, its own division, which was created to address both fire and police vehicle and equipment needs. And this is in response to an independent assessment and analysis of the Fresno Fire Department's Fleet Management and Repair Program, which was completed in March of 2016. Under the Municipal Fleet Maintenance, their budget is $28.6 million. This is a decrease of about $9.7 million. The appropriations reflects a reduction of, I'm sorry, $876,100 for personnel appropriations, $8.4 million for non-personnel, and roughly $492,000 for interdepartmental charges. These declines primarily reflect a shift of charges from the Municipal Fleet Maintenance into now the, the municipal, excuse me, Public Safety Fleet Maintenance Division. Moving on to page B-160, specifically the Public Safety Fleet Maintenance, they will have a budget of $9.4 million in FY 19. Their PERS appropriation will include a reallocation of nine FTE from the Fire Department and 13 FTEs from the Internal Service Funded Fleet Division. Public Safety Fleet Maintenance non-personnel appropriations are set at $6.2 million. It's primarily due to the transfer resources, again, previously housed in the police and fire departments. And their internal department charges will increase by roughly $350,000. And again, this is attributed to the shifting of charges from Internal Service Funds now to the General Fund Public Safety Fleet Union. Counsel, this concludes my overview.
Thank you, Henry. So we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this part of the budget? CNN will bring it back. Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Hey, just a couple of questions for me. The Keola's contract para-transit, when is that going back out to bid?
We are currently working on that new bid. And within roughly a year, we'll be back out to bid. Is that about right, Greg?
And their contract is?
About 18 months.
Their contract is eight, okay, so we'll go out about six months before.
We're trying to get out early, yes.
Sure. And as, I think I've asked this question before, and it may be one for the city manager to answer, because I see my dear friend Rick Stites sitting back there trying to hide, but I know that he would want me to ask this. Are we gonna allow the department to participate in the bid, city manager? For para-transit services?
I have not given that any thought as of recent.
And it's something we can look into. Yeah, that's the first I've heard you ask that question, so I'm happy to talk to the department about it.
Well, there's some people, you know, little guy back in the room with some glasses on, that probably would give you a whole earful about it. So you heard that, Rick, one year out to bid, so be ready. So update on BRT while I have you here. How that, the rollout happened earlier this year?
Sure, it happened in February, and we've got about two to three months' worth of ridership data. Ridership is increasing over the last, or since inception, discounting the first month because it's a partial month. Seen about a 38% increase over that time from when we first started. We're probably close to what, or a little bit above what the original or previous route structure levels were. As far as on-time performance, it's our best performing route as far as on-time performance. We're running about 90% on-time performance relative to about 75% to 80% on the rest of our routes. That's pretty much the performance measures.
Okay. Now you said there's a 38% increase from the initial rollout till now?
Yeah.
Are we tracking with what your ridership estimates would be? Or is it, when you say, are you 38% higher than what you thought you would be?
That's just a sheer 38% from when we first started, not where we.
Right. And I'm anticipating that. You kind of thought that over time, your ridership estimates would hit a certain point. Are you on track with that?
I would have to get back to you. I don't have those original projections. Those were probably done in the 2014 timeframe. So the issue is likely compounded by the fact that ridership has been on a decline in general for our entire system. And so how do you account for a decline as well as increased ridership on that specific route? I can tell you our ridership for system-wide is, has leveled out now. Very early to see, this year would be the first year in many years that we're actually not losing ridership over the previous year. And as of right now, we're a half a percent higher than the previous fiscal year with one month ago.
And what do you, how do you account for that?
I, a lot of theories out there. My, my observation is frequency brings ridership. And so we saw frequency increases when we went on the Fax 15 show on Cedar. We saw ridership increases. With the Blackstone and Ventura BRT, we've seen what appears to be early on increased ridership. I think we've also done some work on, in other areas such as on-time performance, and those probably are positive to riders as well.
And I know we talked as, I sit on the Subcommittee for Transportation, so I know we talked maybe a little bit more than the rest of the council. And I'm gonna ask you a question that I've asked you in private, but I'll ask you publicly is, I understand that ridership's on the decline across the country. I mean, it's not, this is not a phenomenon unique to Fresno. What are the plans to, what are your plans and your thoughts on trying to increase ridership? And what are some of the reasons why ridership's on the decline just as a whole?
I think I hit on the majority of the, or the major component, which is frequencies. Customers, you know, from a national perspective, they want to get from their destination or their point of origin to their destination as quickly as possible. So most agencies nationally, including us, are focusing on how to do that. Obviously, if we can get the bus from point A to point B faster, that helps. But there's a lot of external influences on that, traffic being one of them. The next thing is really how long are they waiting for the bus? Because that is, contributes to their total trip time. Then we can look at transfers and a whole bunch of other stuff. But the majority of the agencies are seeing improvements related to shortening that trip time. Secondarily, I would say we're, agencies, including ourselves, are looking at more innovative ways to get people to and from their destinations, demand-response type of services using. of services, uh, using a phone app to call that service, and we are just starting to look into those types of things.
Interesting, okay. Um, there's one other question I had, and I can't, it's escaping me right now, so I'll, I'll let my other colleagues chime in, but I, I reserve the right to come back and, when I remember what I was going to ask. Thanks.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you. I, I too would like to see the, the, the Keola's, uh, contract brought back, actually, under the city. I, I get a number of calls from folks that are out there, and, and it's just like, when you call the cable company and they tell you they're going to be there between 8:00 AM and Thursday. I mean, that's just not very reliable, so, so I'll, I'm, I'm going to second my, my colleagues' comments on, on that.
We could certainly take a look at that.
Um, I've got a couple of questions. Um, you know, I've gotten good feedback from, from the BRT. Um, the, the only downside I would say for BRT is that we took away some of the stops, and the distance is a little bit greater to, to get to, especially for folks that, um, are not that mobile. Um, and, and I had a question around that, so I think it's day before yesterday, I was driving on Blackstone, and I happened to see a, a Q bus, and then right behind the Q bus was a 15 bus. Is there overlap on-
There is on certain sections of Blackstone, on the, uh, southern end of-
Do we have that for the Kings Canyon Ventura corridor?
I don't believe we have any overlap.
Okay.
On the, on the Kings Canyon?
26.
Oh, 26. So, you know, a lot of that is just, uh, the route is quite a bit different, but there is a, a minor overlap sometimes just to, to get them transferred.
Yeah. And then, um, I, I happen to attend a, a, a transportation conference, I think it was a couple of months back, um, Southern California. Very interesting conversation about transportation and, and, and public roads and highways, and, and I know that there are some cities that are looking at, obviously, the, the purpose of public transportation is to reduce a lot of those, um, greenhouse, uh, emissions, but what we're seeing with, um, particularly with those ride-sharing apps, with Uber, with Lyft, um, I think there's a couple of smaller ones in Southern California, is that a lot of folks are, are going in that direction, um, as well. And so I know that there are other cities and municipalities that are, are looking to, um, assess a, a, a small nominal fee for, for those types of services. Have we looked at considering some of that here in Fresno?
Um, we, we are looking at, uh, the ride-sharing companies as a way to perhaps augment our service or provide service where a fixed route doesn't make sense. I don't know if we've got into, uh, discussing augmenting or, or subsidizing the, the fare for the rideshare. Um, the thought process is we would get them from, uh, their origin to a transfer point on our fixed route, and then back to their origin from the fixed route, transfer point.
Oh, and it's an interesting conversation, because we, we essentially want to reduce the amount of, of vehicle miles traveled, right, and greenhouses, but I think with this service, it's actually increasing that, and so it's kind of offsetting the, the savings we've had. Have, have you guys had internal conversations about what that looks like for Fresno?
That has come up at some of the conferences I've been to. Um, one of the things that the industry is looking at, and we are as well, is, uh, what's called micro-transit. It's, it's, uh, a similar app-driven process where the rider can call, but it would, it would, uh, allow, uh, for larger vehicles, uh, and they would pick up multiple passengers, which would then reduce the number of vehicles on the road. Kind of an in-between, and, and we're hoping to do a pilot in that in, uh, next fiscal year.
Would the city secure, um, uh, an assessment fee on that? Is that the way that it would work?
That would, the one we're looking at, we would, uh, run ourselves, uh, i- if we did a pilot.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we, we need to figure out, uh, the logistics behind that. Right now, we're just looking at doing an analysis, uh, to see where, which areas it might be feasible in. Then we'll look at, uh, how many vehicles, drivers and such it would take, um, to, to do that pilot.
Well, and maybe, maybe I didn't explain myself right. So I think for, for, for my comments, for the Uber and the Lyft, we're, you know, we're having more wear and tear on our streets than the roads.
Oh.
Um, I'm talking about that kind of, of, of a fee, especially as you see the increase. I mean, honestly, everybody right now is a, is an Uber driver, right?
Yeah, that might be more of a question for our Public Works Department. Um, they would typically charge that type of fee, I, I believe.
And if you recall, councilmember, we actually looked at that at the airport, and council didn't support that, I believe, late last year, so, same type of concept.
It's a different year.
Sorry.
It's a different year. No, city manager's been waiting for that moment. You just queued, you just left a big ball up in the airport.
And then, just a, another question, moving on. Route 26 and 39, um, I know that, and I appreciate you guys went out and did the community meetings for, when, before we launched BRT, that was very, very helpful. Thank you for, for that. We were going to engage in, um, kind of an assessment of the routes and the ridership. Um, have, are you guys done with that assessment, or is that still ongoing?
Uh, we intend to bring all of that information back, uh, to council on the 28th, and, you know, in a form of a workshop, and explain, uh, the analysis of the entire restructure at that point.
I, I'd like to meet with you prior to that and kind of go over, especially the routes in southeast. Um, we've got a lot of elders and seniors.
We are setting up meetings with, with you and other councilmembers.
Perfect. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Brenda.
All right. Jim, um, on, we still, we get funded from a lot of federal dollars, and it requires a 20% match, is that correct?
Uh, we do get funded, uh, significantly through the federal government as well as the state, and I believe the 20% fare box recovery is a state mandate.
Oh, that's a state mandate?
Correct.
Both?
Uh, we do have a 20%, typically a 20% match on any grant.
So, the 20% has to come from the fare box?
TDA requires our fare box recovery to be 20% of our operational cost. So, we, we just simply look at what are, what dollars we've collected in fares versus what, uh, our operational budget is.
And in recent years?
And we're, we're right around 20% at this point.
Right around 20%. Okay, so, the 20% doesn't, does not include using general fund money by moving fire and police into fleet services under FACS?
No, not at all.
Okay, so it's all fare recovery?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Chavez, I used Uber three days ago, and, uh, want you to know that now they offer in Fresno, uh, rides for somebody that need, that is in a wheelchair. So, and, uh, you know, keep that in mind when you, when you figure this out 18 months from now.
Hard to do, is it just tow the?
What's that?
Where does the, where does the wheelchair fit in the car?
You know, I think that, I think that Uber, private companies responding to the needs, so what you're going to see, already Uber's, you're really on to something on your transportation convention that you went to, so the future is the, the private market's going to figure all this stuff out, and they'll have Uber vehicles out there that will pick up handicap folks or folks with special needs and deliver them, so.
Like the one-
It's already, yeah, it's already underway, so, and, and I think Jim recognizes that too. We've talked about it, yes.
Yeah, uh, both Uber and Lyft offer paratransit-capable vehicles in some areas, and it's usually based on the demand for that service. They, they have no requirement to do that, um, but in certain situations, it, it fits their business model.
And so, a real interesting question at that time will be, what could Uber deliver somebody from a door to a door for compared to the city of Fresno delivering them, either through Keola's or in-house or whatever? And my guess is going to be Uber's going to be able to deliver them door-to-door much cheaper, and you'd actually be better off showing up at the person's house, hand them the $20 bill, and call it a day, and let them contract with Uber. The city of Fresno would actually save money doing that. So, it's going to be very interesting, the future of transit, so, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Councilmember Baines.
You're remembered.
Oh, it doesn't even show that it's on up here, okay. Well, how do I know when it's on and off? That could be dangerous, by the way. Um, so a couple of years ago, we, we talked about, uh, the employee performance, making sure that our, that we had a, uh, an absentee problem and a tardy problem, a late problem with our, uh, personnel and, and FACS. How are we doing with that? What's the latest update on, on our bus drivers coming to work on time and absenteeism?
We have, we have seen, last figures I've seen, we've seen a modest improvement in the number of hours that they've, uh, been in attendance. Um, once again, just like ridership, I'm cautiously optimistic. I believe, uh, we're discussing, uh, those types of issues in our negotiations currently.
So there's been a modest improvement in, in the absenteeism rate? And when you say modest?
I think it's anywhere from 50 to 100 hours per person.
Improvement?
Uh, it fluctuates.
Improvement?
Per year, yes.
Okay.
Is that correct?
50?
Roughly 50.
Okay. And, um, I wanted to, to, to mention, and this is also for the city manager's benefit as well, that, that you and I chatted about, uh, hydrogen, the hydrogen buses. Uh, I know we talked a little bit about electric and, and what have you, and, and I'll say this, and, and also for the city manager, our previous city manager would have never let me talk him into electric, electric or hydrogen buses, however.
He's watching right now.
I know. Ibrew's is coming.
He told me that's my problem.
Uh, uh, electric and hydrogen, baby, here we come. But I, but I wanted to, to mention that, I know I owe you an email, I think.
Yes, you do.
Connecting you, uh, with, uh, the, the folks that are really bringing hydrogen-fuel technology here. And city manager, I wanted to queue that up for you so you can hear it too, and, and hold me to that, because I know that they're in town this week.
Okay.
Uh, and would, would love to, I know that the mayor has been in conversation with them, and I specifically, um, mentioned to the mayor, uh, about getting them in contact with our, you know, our fleet division, transportation, because I think there may be opportunities there, and just so that the council knows, and I know you, you already know this, but, you know, hydrogen ultimately is, is where I think we'll end up as far as fuel, fuel efficiency and, and a greenhouse gas reduction standard for, for vehicles. And there's a unique opportunity for Fresno to participate in, um, in a pilot study, uh, with, uh, a company that has some, some pretty neat technology, and we have fleets here in Fresno that are switching their entire truck fleets over to hydrogen. So, it's, in my opinion, it's worth us looking into. I'm going to take responsibility and make sure I connect you with them, because, because we, we need to do that. And city manager, I will loop you in, loop you in that as well, because I, I think it's a unique opportunity, so.
More than happy to talk to him.
And I, and I know you're open to it, so I just wanted to, to make sure I loop the city manager in too. Thank you. Still on. Check. Still on.
Yeah, I think she has it automatically on, right?
So, just have a couple, um, questions. In the budget, um, how much monies do we have for, I know one of the, the things that we've been trying to do over the last couple of years is to improve in all shelters and the trashcans that are in the bus stops. I know that, and I want to thank you and your team for, um, doing some of the ones that, um, actually were highlighted by the young people in our community and those that ride, um, the buses in my district, um, but just wanted to see if you could tell me, um, how much money and how many bus, new bus, bus shelters does that mean?
Uh, I'll try and answer that question as clearly as possible. Um, just, um, we have a couple of specific projects, uh, that the funding was targeted at. Uh, one of them is, uh, some disabled access, uh, bus stops. There are roughly 20 of those that we intend to correct ADA issues and install shelters. Many of them don't have shelters. That dollar amount, I believe, is roughly 2.1 million, uh, in our capital budget. We also have, um, some specific, uh, TIRCP-specific money for shelters along Shaw and Cedar that would equate to, looks like, about 5.7 million. Um, and then roughly about, I, I would guess, because it's multiple grants, I could probably get you a more accurate number later, but about 500,000 for just general shelter upgrades and refurbishment. As far as how many that will cover?
Anywhere in the city, the 500,000?
Uh, yes, we would typically, uh, do that based on ridership levels, place shelters at the higher ridership, uh, stops, uh, to benefit more people. Um, we are also looking, looking at refurbishing some shelters and changing their colors, so we may do that, uh, route by route, simply because we want some uniformity in the route.
Okay. How many would we, we be able to do with that 500,000? Doesn't seem like too much.
I don't have that figure on numbers, and the reason why is because, um, we don't intend to u, uh, to replace all of the equipment with brand-new equipment, particularly the shelters. We intend to refurbish them, and so my staff is working on costing, uh, out what a refurbished shelter would cost, and new benches and trashcans, uh, those aren't worth doing the refurbishment. Uh, so I don't really have a good number for that. If we were to replace, uh, that, you know, just buy new shelters, they're about 5,000 per shelter, so we're looking at maybe 100 shelters.
But just for the cost of the shelter, not the labor?
Just for the shelter, yeah.
Is that, is that 500,000?
Well, we do that internally.
Okay.
Yeah, we absorb that internally.
Okay, perfect. Will the, will you guys be coming back at a later date, um, to council when you have those shelters that you're going to be replacing, or, um, once we approve the budget, you guys are just going to go out?
We, we will move forward with it, but I, I anticipate we will have, uh, discussions with council members on where we intended to refurbish. The intent is to get on a schedule, so we're refurbishing all of them over a time period of three to five years.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Another question that I had, um, I know that I've been asking, um, this for four years, and, um, just for the sake of folks knowing, is there, um, I guess, resources available this year to make sure that we get Inspiration Park connected? Because I know that that's been a big issue over the last, now, four years, trying to get folks with, that are, um, that have special needs out and have actual access to get to the park.
That, uh, per our previous discussion, yes, we should be able to do that, uh, in conjunction with the restructure we're talking about. We can talk more about that on the 28th, uh, but our intention is that that particular change would be able to be done in this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year.
Um, and do we have a timeframe for that to get? Do we know?
I have my staff working out a timeframe for all those restructure items. Um, that one, uh, is, the, the routes associated with, with them are cost-neutral, so it really is just a, a matter of, um, timing it with our union, uh, bargaining unit signups, uh, and, and planning it out, so. I would say, uh, well, let me ask Greg.
Six months? Six months, yeah.
Six months after budget approval, or?
So, around, yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you, that's good news. I know we've been talking about it for a number of years.
Long time.
Yes, long time. Okay. Um, those are all the questions that I have for now, thank you. Councilmember Capriolu.
Thank you. Uh, good to see you again, Jim, uh, and your team. I'm really happy about Shaw and Cedar with the enhanced, uh, bus stops, that's fantastic. Uh, I know it's a really busy streets, those two in particular, and with our hot summers and hopefully wet winters, it'll be a, a useful asset for BRT, uh, your FACS.
Yes.
But I wanted to ask about BRT. So, is the status improved for BRT on Shaw between, uh, Fresno State and, say, Fig Garden Village? I know we're light on numbers, but we were increasing.
Oh, on Shaw, has, has the ridership increased on Shaw?
To justify BRT installation of that.
I haven't looked at whether BRT has had a specific impact on the Shaw ridership. Um, just looking at the last few months, I, I don't think we've seen a, an appreciable increase since we saw a lar, you know, we saw a large increase when we increased the frequency on Shaw itself, but I don't, I, I'm not seeing this huge impact on Shaw.
Okay, good, thank you. Keep up the good work, you and your team. Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
I have a question for you, Jim. I just wanted to, um, call up one of the young men from YLI. Um, do you guys want to come up briefly? I know you guys did some work with, uh, surveys and, um, some analysis of the- Um, if you guys want to come up briefly, I know you guys did some work with, uh, surveys and, um, some analysis of the bus routes in southeast. Um, but I just want to give them a quick opportunity to briefly touch on, on some of the work that you guys did. I'm currently scheduling a meeting to get those, uh, surveys. But, uh, if you could just give a quick overview of kind of the work that you guys did and hopefully get that survey to, to Jim.
Yeah, how's everyone doing? My name is Fanae.
Hello, my name is Marco Sanchez.
So, uh, we're part of a group called the Fresno Boys and Women of Color. Uh, so we do advocacy work here in Fresno, um, we're young leaders from around Fresno, trying to bring change to Fresno. Uh, so one of the things that we've been working on recently is a, a fax campaign. So we realized that something that our youth, us as youth, uh, need a lot is transportation. Uh, so we've been trying to find ways of like, we've been working with fax, and we've met with so, some of the city council members trying to get better transportation for us young people, right? Because we know that young people are riding the bus, uh, to school, and we know that, that's, that youth are a big ridership when it comes to fax. So we conducted, we've conducted our own surveys to about two hundred and fifty bus riders, uh, mostly youth. And some of the things that, or two of the main things that popped up is that youth want better frequency on bus and youth want, um, um, more, more, oh, Wi-Fi, sorry about that. Yeah, so these two things, they, um, they relate back to safety. We identified that they relate back to safety, because some of our youth, they're waiting way too long at bus, at bus stops. And that, when, that waiting too long, they feel unsafe just waiting at the bus stop. Also with Wi-Fi, we found out that some of the youth with their phones, they can't use their phone because of data unless they have Wi-Fi. And a lot of the youth, when they don't feel safe, uh, they call their friend or their family members, let them know where they're at, and they let them know, I'm gonna be home around this time. They can't do that if they don't have data, so Wi-Fi was really important in that sense. So we, we've been working, like I said, we've been working with fax, um, trying to get, get that to them because we want to let them know that some of our youth aren't feeling safe at the bus stops. And these are two suggestions that, that youth wanted to see for them to improve their, their, their safety at the bus stops.
Great. Thank, thank you guys for, for doing it. Did, Jim, do you have that survey? Uh, yeah, not yet. So, will we could forward that survey to, to, to Jim? Um, and I'd love to see that, we're scheduling a meeting, but thank you guys for, for that survey and the work you're doing out there.
Yeah, and we've worked with, we've met with Greg, so we should be getting that survey to him soon.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Uh, the two items they mentioned, one was, uh, frequency. I think that, uh, reiterates what I've been saying. Uh, as far as Wi-Fi, shouldn't be surprised that our younger generation is interested in Wi-Fi. Um, from a national study level, Wi-Fi is not as important, uh, to the general population as some of the other items I, I brought up. But obviously important to, um, uh, for the reasons they mentioned. We are going to be doing a pilot on the B R T, uh, buses, uh, to, to install Wi-Fi. We, we had the ability to do that because we had to put cellular on those buses for other reasons, so we have that connection. And then we are looking at doing Wi-Fi at Courthouse Park in Manchester, uh, the...
Jim, what is the cost of adding Wi-Fi to our buses?
I, I wish I could answer that question. I, I can get that to you.
Okay, that would be great.
Um, the stations are probably more expensive than the buses.
I'm, I'm sorry, Jim, over here.
Yeah.
Just, just back to the Wi-Fi, I don't want to leave it too quickly. Is it, and I know you don't know the direct cost, but can you give us a, an idea? I mean, is it ten thousand dollars or, you know?
Well, no, I would say it's probably under five thousand a bus, uh, to install from scratch. But as I had mentioned, we already have some of that equipment on the bus, the cellular router's already on there. And then there's usually a twenty dollar a month, uh, charge for the cellular fee per device, so that would be per bus. So that's, uh, not too expensive, but, uh, that price may go up depending on how much bandwidth we use. So, you know, if we get a whole bunch of young riders on there really chewing up the data, we may have to pay more per month for that data cost.
Have, have we, have we tried to, um, talk to some of the providers like Comcast, A T and T?
Yes, we're working with I S D, and I S D has been working with the major providers to see if they can, uh, participate in that program.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to, well, in my perspective, I think that's a, it's a good idea. I think we should be going into the twenty-first century. Um, I think it'll attract younger people, um, so it helps increase ridership. And even on those longer routes, I think it could help with homework, um, work, those kind of things. So I think it's a good amenity, and it doesn't seem, I think, as a whole, like a great cost, even if it, we don't have the, the capacity to add all this data. But I think if we can provide some, I think that that would be a plus.
And that's the typical scenario we get into. We, we off, you know, in general, somebody offers Wi-Fi and, uh, the traffic is so bad that it's difficult to use and, and slow. So, you know, do we want to offer a mediocre service? Uh, how do we manage that service? And we're looking at the providers to help us provide those answers.
Perfect. Um, one question that I forgot to ask earlier, and I know that I've brought it up in our last, um, meeting in our, um, Transportation Committee. And then I've also been in conversation with, um, the city manager about bike share. Um, I know that there's a number of folks that are interested on the idea. I know that obviously the buses can't get to every neighborhood in our community, but I, I believe that there is, um, some great, um, focal points in our city where we could, uh, potentially explore piloting programs. You know, there's Fresno State, and I know Fresno State has been doing something, um, but there's City College, there's Downtown, there's the Tower District, figuring out, um, connectivity, um, through one, you know, just getting creative and, and using maybe a bike share to fill in some of those gaps. I know that I've been talking for now four years about how do we also connect Tower and Downtown, um, via, you know, public transit much more effectively so that, um, you do have folks coming from Tower to the Downtown and hopefully, um, boost up the, you know, potential interest in entertainment and things that can happen here in the Downtown area.
So we are working on a pilot program right now, um, Public Works, Jill Gormley in particular, and Greg Barfield, on a docked bike program. Um, and we are looking at Tower, Downtown, Fresno State, all the areas that you talked about. So, um, as that develops, we'll make sure to keep you informed.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Baines?
I just wanted to second the idea about, uh, Wi-Fi on the buses, and I think it'd be a great problem if we had a whole bunch of young millennials riding it and we were almost running out of data. So, uh, I think, I think that'd be a good thing. So anyway, I just wanted to second my colleagues, uh, Chavez and, uh, President Soria on that.
Hopefully they're doing homework and not Facebook.
That's fine too, it's all good. Just put them on the bus.
Just put them on the bus.
Can, can we wager on that?
No, I would, I have a daughter, I know that.
Facebook, I'll cover it all.
Facebook is homework for some people.
Um, actually, the young, actually, just for the record, young people don't really use Facebook. They are, um, on other social media platforms like Instagram, Snapchat, and so forth. So Facebook is outdated for our young people, just so you guys know. I don't think anyone else has punched up, so thank you, Jim, for all that information. I think, I don't know if we can cover anything in the next thirteen minutes. Okay. Do you have anything? Which one?
Clerk's office or attorney's office? Because I think the fire will probably take longer. You have a preference? Do you want to do the mayor's? The mayor's? Okay. So what time are you leaving?
City clerk, could we do yours, you think? We can wrap up.
Good morning, council. I have a presentation for the city clerk's budget for twenty eighteen nineteen. You help Brianna. Which one? You do it for me, thank you. Hey, we're gonna start out with some highlights from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, some of the things we worked on was reclassifying our positions in the clerk's office and making, um, deputy city clerks and senior deputy city clerk positions instead of admins, secretaries, and record specialists. We also worked on the June fifth election, which is over, and we have a few runoffs that we'll need to work with the county on, as well as a petition that we expect for the Parks Initiative. We'll need to be working on that. Uh, Laserfish is our document portal, and we have documents in that document portal that go back to nineteen ninety-eight to present. And as we get a chance, we're also adding more information that's historical. So we'll have most of our data electronic, which will help with our research purposes. We've been training on Granicus on a regular basis, as well as NetFile. With NetFile, we have, uh, liaisons in the departments to help us manage all the seven hundred forms in the assuming office and leaving offices, so that's been beneficial to us. And we are conducting our records inventory in the clerk's office. And we were able to add Granicus closed captioning this year, since October. Some of the projects for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen include implementing records management training for city departments. And Records Management Resolution was passed in two thousand and eight, but no training has taken effect since then. So we want to be, bring departments up to date on what procedures they need to use to destroy records and to also inventory their records, so we know what we have on hand and how to manage that. Um, we adopted the city, excuse me, the state's retention schedule, which is very generic and doesn't cover all the records that we have in the city. So we're gonna get a little bit more detailed than that and be bringing that to council for approval. Uh, let's see. We're implementing a kiosk to electronically display our agendas and notices in front of the city hall building. And that is in the works right now with I S D and the city manager's office. We will be implementing ecomments, which is a module from Granicus to allow us to have the agenda interactive with citizens so that they can place their comments on the agenda items, um, electronically and not have to come down to city hall to do that and still have their say. We're also gonna implement the minutes module for generating minutes in Gran, Granicus. We do that right now, but we don't have that module, which actually completes seventy-five to eighty percent of our minutes before the meeting is over. So this will help us streamline our minute process a lot. And we're also gonna implement performance measures to, uh, measure what's being done in our office and see where we need assistance and things like that. Our future projects, um, some of these are things that didn't get funded, but we will probably bring them forth in nineteen twenty, which is our, uh, digital signatures, which we would use to reduce the time for signing contracts and purchase orders. And it's just like when you buy a home, you go through that digital process. You don't, no longer go in and sign documents at your, um, realtor's office.
Did this, are these included in this year's budget?
No, they're, they're not. We, it was included, but it didn't get approved at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll be bringing this back in the future. Um, we also have microfilm, which we will, um, we need to, uh, microfilm our current, excuse me, our permanent records for preservation. And there is a big gap from where we stopped the last time to what needs to be done now. And so we'll be bringing that back forward. Implementing the boards and commission module to Granicus will allow us to better manage our boards and commissions, better give you information about the boards and commissions that you're interested in, letting you know of vacancies and applicants who have applied. And finally, um, the biggest thing for, for next year that I'm gonna work on this year is pricing a consolidated record storage area. We have a record center at the Met Building in the basement, which is not the ideal place for records to be, especially permanent records. So we want to get those out of there and store them with a vendor who specializes in managing records. They have the facilities with the right temperatures and that kind of thing, and, and they would manage that. And instead of departments calling the records, excuse me, the city clerk's office to get records from that location, the vendor would do that for us, um, included in that price. So I'll be researching that and hopefully come back with you with some recommendations. So I'm free to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Baines?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam City Clerk. And, and let me just say that, I know, I know a, a lot of people don't always know what the clerk's office does. Uh, we get the distinct pleasure of knowing what you do. And for the, for the record, I'm gonna just make sure that the listening public knows that you're responsible for all the historical data, uh, of the city.
Yes.
Which, which you are, and I don't want to, uh, underplay how important it is to be the city's historian.
Yes.
Uh, the history of our city is incredibly important, and you all do a really good job. So I want to thank, thank you for that, and, and also just let people know what, what you all actually do. Aside from sitting up here and keeping the agendas in order, you really, you know, you, you and your office really do manage our hi, our history. And it's a, it's a, it's an important thing. And I want to thank you for bringing us into the twenty-first century. I know I say this every time with you when we go through your evaluation, but it's worth noting that a lot of the, as I look through your presentation, recommendations, the, the things you're really trying to do are, are really bring our city current, you know, in a digital world. And in many ways, we're, we're kind of behind the times. Uh, so, so thank you for that. I, I remember when you had the idea of Granicus and, you know, some of my colleagues up here went, went kicking and screaming, and, and I think now they all recognize the value of it. So I want to try to he, help you out this year, particularly in the electronic signature. Uh, if you can pull that, that slide back up. I think you were, I, I think you're, the electronic signatures. Talk to me a little bit about how that would work. Would, would that apply to us too as council members? Or only just department heads and, how, what, what would that do?
My plan would be to start gradually to, um, open it up to maybe just contracts, and then maybe expand to purchase orders and other things like that that needs to be signed. But contracts is really the perfect place to start because we have inside and outside people who need to sign on those contracts. And so a lot of times, similar to the agenda, people are running around with a paper copy, taking it to different locations for ink signature.
Yep, right.
And this would just automate that where there's a workflow. So once someone signs, it goes to the next person and the next person. And in the end, the clerk will have a full signature.
Yeah, that just is like a no-brainer to me. And, and I, I, you know, so I, I want to make a motion that we, uh, implement the digital signatures, uh, for signing contracts and repurchase orders. It's eleven thousand dollar expense, I, I think we can probably figure out how to, how to do that. Um, well, I wanted to talk about the microfilm, um, a, a little bit too. And so talk to me a little bit about the, the microfilm and the records class as permanent. So what, what would that do? I know we've talked about it a little bit, but I don't think that most people get a chance to hear.
The microfilm, uh, is for the permanent records. Paper can't last forever. If we look at some of the documents that's in the, um, record center right now, that's really, really old from when the city first began, everything is starting to fade. So what we want to do is protect that before that happens and get them on microfilm.
Are we starting to notice some of that already?
Yeah, yeah. It, and it's the older documents mainly, but we don't want our current documents to get in that condition. So we want to take care of them ahead of time. And when we microfilm, the original roll goes to an off-site storage out of the state for protection. That's our, uh, backup recovery. If we ever need to, to, if we have some kind of disaster here and we need to recover our documents, we would go to that. And, um, we keep a copy here on file so that, um, we can access that easily to find the records. And what they're doing now, what the vendors are doing, is they're able to microfilm and digitize the records in one, once they'll swoop.
Does it make it easier for search purposes?
It does. Once it's, uh, digitized, yeah, you can do keyword searches. So it comes with, uh, the O C Rs, yeah, to do that.
And, and I can tell you that I, just a couple of weeks ago, I was trying to find a particular council action, and, and I couldn't find it, you know, doing keyword search on Granicus. And, and, uh, you know, I'm assuming this would, this would help that process when I'm going really far back. I was probably like ten years back or something like that, maybe trying to look for something.
And, yeah, Granicus only started it in twenty fourteen, so, yeah, it's not gonna have that. But we do have a document portal that's on our website, and that is Laserfish, where we're putting the historical and current documents into, and that can also do a keyword search.
Okay. Well, I, I'll also make a motion that we, we, uh... Well, I'll also make a motion that we fund the microfilm and digitize records system for the thirty thousand, for thirty thousand dollars as well. Now, the, the boards and commissions module of Granicus, what is that, what is that to do, I mean?
It's really an automated way to manage your boards and commission right now. We do have information on the website, but I know that we have spreadsheets and things like that, that we're tracking our boards and commission members, and when they turn over, that kinda thing. This will maintain the history, and it'll also keep it updated, and you can generate different reports from the data.
And how are we doing it now? Is it all done by hand, or?
Yes, it's spreadsheets, basically.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we automate that too.
I'll second those.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Were you pinched up? No?
The only question I think that I hadn't, you know, I was gonna ask the same questions about those recommendations that you made. I think that it is terrific that we are moving closer to be caught up in terms of with technology and being able to search for things. I think that that's very important for us. Just in terms of like the department as a whole, in terms, I know that there's been changes in staff. What can we do to make sure that, you know, we're retaining staff? Because it does cost to train, and you know, the loss is so.
Yeah, I think perhaps changing our classifications in the department will help, because it does give a path for the entry-level staff who come in to move up into a higher level, you know, once they've been on board for a while and trained. Also, yeah, that front desk turns over quite a bit a lot, you know, it's just the nature of the business, I think.
And is that kinda typical with, if we're looking at compensation in comparison to other cities across the state that are comparable? Have we, have you had a chance at all to look at that? I know like for other groups within the city, we've done, or we're trying to complete some of these studies.
Yeah. That would probably be a good idea. I do believe that they are not, the other cities do have that classification, but I do believe that they are paid more.
So it'd probably be worth, just like we're doing, maybe class and comp studies with our other departments, to really look at that, because I know there is a cost, you know, to training folks so often. So figuring out how we make sure that we're retaining our staff, I think it's important. So I don't know if we would do it within your department. Would that be something that Personnel Department would have to do? I'm not sure.
Hopefully, so.
Yes, that's something that we have to engage the Personnel Department on.
And this, obviously, this department is so small. I don't know, you know, I know that there's a significant cost with other groups because of how large they are, and there are so many classifications. Do you guys think this is something that we could look?
I think we probably can. I think some of those positions may already be within one of the groups that we are doing a class and comp study for. I believe it's FCEA that we are currently doing one for, and I believe some of those classifications may fall into that unit, so we may already be covering it.
Okay, so maybe we could just follow up and see?
We can.
Make sure that those positions that we're talking about, okay, perfect.
We will.
Thank you.
And I think that's it. I don't think there's any other questions. So what we'll do, we'll recess until one thirty, and we'll come back, and the first presentation will be from our fire chief.
I'm just, I'm just trying to be in terms of fairness and being transparent to the public, so that they actually know, right? We, I think last week, when we asked you about having kind of the ideal fire department, you know, so what is it that it's gonna take us to get there? And I think having those real dollars and really just laying it out how it is, I think that that's probably the best way to do it, in my point of view. I don't know what my other colleagues.
I wanna just jump in a little bit, because I remember last week, I see that we have three hundred and thirty-four proposed, and, and I remember asking, said, are we trying to get to three thirty-four? And you're like, no, we're not. And I think that's in line, we're funding three thirty-four, but three hundred and eleven are actual, how many do we actually need? I guess if three thirty-four was proposed, but we're really not trying to fund actually hire three hundred and thirty-four, the additional twenty-three firefighters, what do we need in order to make sure we're, we're on par with the number of firefighters we need in the city?
Well, that's, that's the challenge, is to have a balance. It's not just about having, adding twenty-three positions and filling those vacancies, because you have to have a place to put those firefighters. There, you cannot just create a, put them in a relief pool and make this an large relief pool. That doesn't help us in our minimum daily staffing.
So the reality is, and that kinda makes more sense, in order to have the three hundred and thirty-four firefighters, you're saying there's supporting infrastructure that you really need to have the three hundred and thirty-four firefighters that we don't have, which means that it wouldn't make sense to just have twenty-three more firefighters without the support infrastructure for those positions?
Yeah, you need a place to put them. You need to put them on a company, or improve the minimum daily staffing. If you're, if you're gonna fill those vacancies, if the goal is to fill the vacancies, to add to the minimum daily staffing, that's one thing. If you just wanna fill the vacancies, there's a relief pool of six captains, six engineers, and nine firefighters. We haven't been at the top of that relief pool in probably two or three years. And if you did have a full relief pool, it would, it would reduce the amount of overtimes, correction, shift replacement each day. But that's, I don't know if that's the goal. If the goal is to improve the staffing level, then, then that's a different, that's a different number. You have to have that, but you also have to have the overtime, because every firefighter is gonna have about twenty-five shifts off a year, whether it be injuries, sick, annual leave, et cetera. And so you have to prepare and cost that piece out with, along with every FTE. It's, it's not just a matter of hiring a bunch of firefighters and saying, look, we filled all the vacancies. They have to have a place to go.
You can continue on with your presentations, sorry, I interrupted.
Okay, we're gonna talk a little bit about the, oops, the staffing. So this is kind of a, you know, a one-on-one of the fire department. What you see in front of you, these are an engine and a truck, they're two different pieces of equipment. Is this really loud, or is it? Okay. An engine and truck, an engine's about a forty thousand pound piece of equipment. It holds a captain, an engineer, and a firefighter or two. And then a truck is about an eighty thousand pound piece of equipment, holding the same staffing. We have an A, B, and C shift. They work two twenty-four hour shifts together, so they're on for two days and they're off for four. So every day in this city, we have seventy-seven firefighters on duty each day. That is an increase over the last few years. About three years ago, we've held steady at seventy-seven for the last two, but we definitely have increased since the recession, and our low at one point was sixty-three. The call volume on average, an apparatus, we usually have a trigger, an industry standard of twenty-five to twenty-eight hundred calls would be the trigger, where another piece of equipment should be parked next to that apparatus to help relieve some of that call volume. If you look at the schedule to the, to the right there, you see there's about fourteen pieces of equipment, engine and trucks, that run over two thousand calls a year, and we've highlighted in red all of the apparatus that run over twenty-four hundred calls each year, noting the engine three, which is downtown, and engine five running over four thousand.
Chief, on those, on that particular page, it lists responses, but it doesn't distinguish a fire response from a medical response?
No, it does not. A response is a response, so part of this challenge is the wear and tear on a forty and eighty thousand pounds piece of equipment, the stops and starts that occur. They run very hard, you know, when they're going to, to a call. It doesn't matter if that call's a medical emergency, a rescuer, a fire, they're responding with the same sense of urgency.
Let's pursue that for a second. So I pulled up September of last year on the sheet that you provided to us. So I was curious about that, so I thought I'd try to figure it out myself. So over a nine-month period, you had four thousand five hundred and two calls, and I did some basic calculations, and of that, two thirty-seven were actual fire, that's eight percent. And then it went on to false alarm, service call, hazardous condition, and other, and I added that up, and it came to, out of forty-five hundred, it came to eight hundred eighty-seven, what I call non-medical calls. So that left a balance, at least for this representation of nine months of last year, of three thousand six hundred and fifteen medical calls, which was eighty percent of the responses. And so it seems to me that we need to, I was talking to one of my friends in my law office, and he was indicating, well, if I call nine-one-one and I'm having a heart attack, I want an ambulance. I don't call and say, look, send a firefighter, I'm having a heart attack. They say, send an ambulance, I'm having a medical condition. So, and I had a hard time explaining to him why, you know, the fire department responds as well as the EMS arrivals, and they're really pretty close to each other, and I had a, I don't think I did a very good job of convincing him that that's the way we roll. And then that segued into the F-350 squad deal, so we could save that heavy equipment and save those responses to fires, or miscellaneous, which is the other calls and false alarm. So I don't have an argument for him, why eighty percent are medical, when we're a fire department putting out fires.
Well, just a little, give you a little brief history, you know, the origin of the fire department was just respond to fires. That has evolved. We are an all-risk mitigation department. It's not just fires, it's medical, it's rescue, hazardous materials, search and rescue, water rescue, et cetera. When you, when a person is having a life-threatening emergency, a medical emergency, two people, usually a paramedic and an EMT on an ambulance, there's not sufficient resources at that emergency to mitigate that, quickly and efficiently to get that patient to the best care they can at the hospital, and that's why.
Wait a minute, so you're saying that an ambulance is less responsive in a medical condition than a fire truck?
No, I'm saying is, if you're having a heart attack, having a medic, a paramedic and an, on an ambulance with an EMT, so they have two people, show up by themselves to try and mitigate your emergency is not gonna do it. And that's why you see throughout the country that fire service has partnered with ambulance companies, and in some cases, they provide their own ambulance service, to help package patients. There's a lot of things to do during a life-threatening emergency, to get that patient packaged and back to the hospital as soon as they can, to help them get to the most, the best treatment they possibly can. So that's why we partner on those most life-threatening emergencies, party one, with the contract provider, which is American at this time, and, and we've done a really good job of working in concert with them. I think people appreciate having their fire department show up. If they're having an emergency across the street, and we've heard this throughout the country, where some agencies stop responding to medical calls, and something happens across the street and they won't leave, you know, the firehouse, that, that's, that's not what we do. We're here to serve. And I think we've trained really, really hard to be really excellent EMTs.
Well, as I understand it though, the dispatcher dispatches both units.
They do.
So you have both rolling at the same time.
Correct.
So if you don't roll, the EMT ambulance service will roll.
They will roll.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the next slide.
I wanna follow up on some of that. Can we do that now, council president? Okay. Councilman Capriolio and myself met with Dave Palmerville from the county, and the mayor and, and his chief of staff were in the room, and we start talking about some of these concerns that we have, and just conceptual thoughts about the service. And Dave said, you know, you guys have a great partnership, and he had suggested to us that, and partly due coming from your request, that they're just about to modify the call operations. So right now, if an emergency calls, comes in, it's handled through a contract through the county, which is contracted to American Ambulance. And, and Councilman Capriolio just talked about both apparatus, both an American ambulance and Fresno City Fire might be rolling onto the same situation. And, and he indicated that the, that you're about to do like a software upgrade that would help with sending maybe only one of the two, whichever one's closer, and maybe better defining the need of the call. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, the right resource is the conceptual. Yes. The right resource is the conceptual software concept that we're talking about, where it's going to send the closest unit, whether it be an ambulance or a fire apparatus to a priority-one medical emergency. It's trying to be the most efficient possible. That doesn't mean the other isn't going to show up. It just may show up a little bit later. Again, going back to packaging patients, you need, you know, more hands to start an IV, intubate a person, get the medication that they're taking, get the information about the patient. That's important for the nurse and doctor to be aware of, to know what kind of medications a paramedic should push. All that happens all very, very quickly and simultaneously with a lot of people on scene. The review of priority-one calls, I think the last slide on here we'll get to, is a list of priority-one medical emergencies that we respond to and the quantity that we responded to in 2017. I believe the county is reviewing priority-one medical calls and priority-twos and threes, and identifying if they need to be upgraded or downgraded to a different priority. If they downgrade some priority ones to a priority-two status, we would not be responding to those at this time.
Is there an impetus to change the definitions of the priority calls? You don't, right now, you don't respond to priority-twos, is that right?
We don't. But just to give you a little history, this department has responded to priority-two calls for 20-plus years, and then some prior to the recession. And then we stopped once we had to park six apparatus, which means we stopped going to about 10,000 calls at that time per year.
Okay. You know, I also spoke with Todd Valari of American Ambulance, the CEO of American Ambulance. And I just want to throw this out here because we asked for this additional time with the chief to talk about some of these additional concepts. And the CEO of American Ambulance said that a lot of the calls honestly don't require Fresno Fire there, and they actually don't require Fresno Ambulance there. But they, one of those two is going to respond anyway. But just so you know, when the call comes into...
Can I have you repeat that?
Yeah.
You said that the CEO of American Ambulance said that most calls don't require fire or an ambulance?
Yeah.
So they don't require anyone?
So here's what happens, Oliver. It's very interesting, by the way, and feel free to call. I've got his number if you'd like to call him and confirm this.
I should ask him to come down here.
Yeah. Because, so here's what happens on the phone call. "Oh, my gosh, I just saw this guy. He's not responding. I can't tell. He might, he could be dead. I don't want to touch him. That sounds like an emergency call. If you were the operator, you'd get that and you go, 'Oh, crap, we've got to get somebody there.'" Then they show up. The guy's drunk, stumbled, has been having shortness of breathing for two years or whatever, and we've got huge medical resources there. Now, I'm not submitting that we should not send somebody, okay? But it's a good time to look at whether we need to roll Fresno Fire and American Ambulance out on that call. And so they struggle with that. So a lot of times, Chief, I believe he said that half the time, Fire gets there first, and half the time, American Ambulance gets there first. So Fire could easily beat them to the call. They get there, they assess the situation. It's not as life-threatening as the phone call made it sound. But within minutes, here's American Ambulance showing up also. This is a lot of resources. Councilman Brettafeld last week was talking about trying to recapture some of the cost for these resources. And I know the chief's opinion is, "Hey, we've got firefighters that are willing and capable of going out on these calls." She doesn't view it as a huge additional cost. But as we look into it, it's a cost on the equipment. So the personnel part might not even change, but it's a huge cost. So we're running these two big types of vehicles that Chief just showed us on a lot of these calls, that in the long run, didn't even need, not only them, but not even an ambulance. Now, Todd was not suggesting we throw the baby out with the bathwater and not respond to these things. They talked about the upgrade to the software would help our dispatchers better define what's really happening out there. But I would suggest that we could, we should do, whoever's the closest can respond, but we don't need the second person until it's determined, "Hey, I need extra hands here." And which case, and by the way, most of these calls are in very concentrated areas of town, and resources are very close to them. Concerning downtown is a big use. American Ambulance is right down the street, Fire is right down the street. So both teams are able to get to these calls real quickly. But a lot of times, we have multiple first responders there when there's really not even a need. Of course, you have to do that because one in 10 times, it's going to be a massive need, right? So, but we have to be very conscientious about how we spend our resources, and this is why we brought Fire back for a second day. Councilman Capriolio started talking several years ago, and I really kind of support this position, and we talked about it several times, is we could hypothetically move to still using the firefighters, not dismissing any personnel, but moving to using like an F-350 truck that carries the medical emergency. By the way, I got to throw this in. A lot of the stuff nowadays, when they're working on an individual, what they do is they get them stable quick and get them on the road to the hospital. It's not sitting around there for an hour trying to fix this person. They're trying to, they get them in the ambulance, they start fixing them on the way to the hospital, okay? So I'm very open, especially with what we discovered in the budget with this morning's first talk. Maybe it's time to create a pilot project in one of our, in one of our fire stations, where we try sending F-350s with the emergency stuff they need, the jaws of life, and we let them roll instead of these huge apparatuses right here.
You know, if I may, and I appreciate all of the conversation, and I know Chief has the maps that are going to show where the medic calls are and the whole bit, and she'll get to that in a second. And I appreciate your desire to want to look at a pilot program. But, you know, in talking with the mayor after he met with you earlier this week, you know, the administration really wants to take a more global look at the request, look at the budgetary impacts, the staffing impacts. And what you're proposing is a meet-and-confer issue.
Okay.
And so we would like to take time to do a comprehensive approach to this, have the same conversations you're having with American Ambulance, with the fire chief in her department, and then come back to council with recommendations.
Yeah, I think that's a good start. And I never, actually felt that that had to be conquered through the budget talks. But it's certainly a good time to have conversations. And, you know, when one of us has a concern, I know Councilman Capriolio's talked about this for years, it's just a real good time to consider the use of money, right? And so I'm very open to, you know, some creative concepts when it comes. And I'm really glad, Chief, that you're working with American Ambulance for this new software. And maybe even that helps relieve, you know, some of the stress on the vehicles that are showing up to all the calls. So, thank you.
Just a quick question. How much does the engine cost?
Engine costs about $750. The equipment's about $125 that goes on the apparatus. And a truck costs about 1.2, 1.3 million with about 150,000 in equipment. The idea of a squad would be probably around 80,000 and change for equipment. But, you know, I agree with the city manager's comments that this is a concept that we need to look at in totality. We'll look at some slides later. But again, it's, you know, it's going to take a lean-in approach on how we implement this and make sure it's in the right location, and how do we want to staff it, and so on and so forth, which I think will take a little bit of time to work through.
Well, for what it's worth, and I want to appreciate Councilmember Capriolio's and Brandell's suggestion on this. This is a very interesting discussion, and I'm curious to see where it's going to come out, city manager, because, you know, all the years I've been here, this is maybe the most in-depth I've gone into some fire budgetary talks about what we need and, you know, and how we use our resources, what have you. And I guess the most shocking thing was when you said we didn't need 334 firefighters that we have proposed in the budget, which I still haven't quite wrapped my head around. But I think a discussion about if the vast majority of our calls aren't fire-related, they are support for medical emergencies, it's a fair conversation to figure out if we have more equipment that actually supports that need while we still maintain our fire equipment. So again, I'm curious to see where it ends up. It is, in my opinion, it's the responsible conversation to be having. So I hope it continues.
Yeah. Just a note, too, going off of Councilmember Brandell's comment about the discussion that we had this morning, just understand that anything that we do concerning the fire department is an ongoing expense. And the money we spoke about this morning is one-time. So anything we add or any changes that we have in the program of the fire department, we add the squads and all the rest of that, that is an ongoing expense that will have to be maintained over the course of the next, in whatever number of years.
Yeah. For, I was specifically talking about the purchase of a couple of fitted F-350s, which would be a one-time expense to do a kind of a pilot project. I'm not dabbling with personnel at all. And so I do think, I do realize job description's part of meet-and-confer, and thank goodness that that MOU is open right now. It's a good time to do that.
Chief, how many trucks do we have and how many engines?
We have four trucks in the city. And we have 19 fire stations, which has 19 engines. We also have Fig Garden. We consider that part of the core. And then we have others in North Central.
Thank you.
So what you're looking at here is kind of a quick snapshot. That does show you the stations, or the majority of the stations in the city. The number behind in the gray box is the number of firefighters on that apparatus. It's an engine with three, or it's a truck with four. You'll see the green is the highlighted truck station. So you have a two-company house, you know, at those locations, with the exception of three. And so what I want to try to describe for you is, what does it take to mitigate a fire emergency with, let's say, a residential fire? So if you look at the fire with the orange circle, what you're looking at is, it would require three engines and two trucks to respond to that emergency, to assemble an effective firefighting force of 15 people, which is the minimum, at that emergency. If it was a commercial fire at the same location, you would have to grab two more pieces of equipment to assemble 21 firefighters at that emergency or an effective firefighting force. When you think about having two fires at the same time, you can see how it would quickly grab a vast majority of our staffing. And that isn't very uncommon in this city. Also, in the summer, we add an additional engine due to heat stress protocols. So you're going to draw down a few more firefighters for that particular call. The next slide here is, this is what your service delivery is at this time. There's 77 firefighters on duty each day. This is the location of where those firefighters are and your truck placement. This is 0.59 firefighters per thousand with this type of deployment. The next three slides are really just kind of showing you a snapshot of 2017, which is consistent in the past few years. This is what we call a heat map. This is where the fires occur in our city, the majority of them. Obviously, with the dark red being more fires and so on and so forth. The next slide is our medical emergency calls. This is the heat map for those. Again, the core, in the downtown core area is a primary location for those medical calls, but they are dispersed throughout the city pretty evenly. This slide is our vegetation fires that occurred in 2017. You mentioned some of those at the last meeting, so we tried to provide you a quick visual of what that looks like. We also, just a side note, have reached out to Caltrans and see if they, what they will do to help partner with us in helping reduce some of these fires that are occurring along the freeways within our city. This slide is really the next steps for the department and the needs. So when we talk about, you know, wanting to consider these squads, I want to bring you back to the current and urgent need of the department. To improve our minimum daily staffing, our next steps, which we talked about at the last meeting, were the need to add a safety officer, the need to add the third firefighter to create the water team, and then we've identified those locations on here. But the city also needs another truck company. We need to relocate our trucks, which is what you are seeing on this map. When you add a truck company, you're going to relocate those trucks to be better placed throughout the city, and you no longer have a gap in the northwest part of Fresno, which we currently have no trucks up in that area. And our response times are pretty poor up there. These would be, you know, what, you know, my recommendations would be to you as funding becomes available, to move this direction before you consider a squad-type situation, which will be the next slide.
Chief, if you added another truck company, then would it make sense to hire actual more, to hire more firefighters? Is that, would it make sense to, and again, I'm going to have to work through the 334, 311 thing, but is, would you're suggesting in adding another truck company, is that, would it make sense to hire more firefighters?
Yes. All of these, all of these proposed are, would require the hiring of new positions.
So if we added another truck company, a safety officer, and how much comprises a water team?
Well, right now, your urban search and rescue team is up in the, you know, northeast part of Fresno. They do both water and heavy rescue. They are responsible right now to try and maintain 13 certifications annually, and it's not reasonable, it's not feasible, it's not happening, and therefore, we're doing some things that are unsafe. And so the idea was to split those two teams into, so you would have a heavy rescue team and a water team, and they each have six or seven disciplines they need to maintain in their CE. To do that, we would add one firefighter to a current team, a current engine company, which means you would have to hire three firefighters to assemble a water team on a current engine company. The new truck company is a completely new set of firefighters. And again, that's not proposed in this budget, and that would require some type of other funding stream because-
Because you'd need a whole new truck. You'd also need a whole new truck, right?
Yeah, you need a new piece of equipment.
A piece of equipment.
And it would allow-
A place to house the truck. Would you need a new place to house the truck, like a-
No, no. It would go into a current fire station that could, you know, house two pieces of equipment. But it would allow us the important piece of rotating our trucks to the right location to better serve the entire community. That would move, with all of those additions, which you see on that slide, would be an additional 18 firefighters to make all that happen. Again, that's not the request. That's just painting the picture of what your fire department needs in its next steps as it grows. That would move us from 77 on duty each day to 83. Our pre-recession was 82 firefighters on duty each day, and that would move the needle to 0.63 firefighters per thousand. This last slide is, or second-to-last slide, is the kind of a big global picture of this squad concept and adding a firefighter to certain current pieces of equipment. This is, again, this will take some conversations with Loc 753, with, you know, city management, and really talk about how best to implement this going forward in a phase-in process as funding becomes available. This would require, with this concept, you would add one, two, what is it, one, two, three, four, five, you know, several squads. You would add an additional firefighter to certain pieces of current equipment. And what's the value of doing that? It goes back to the heavy fire calls that we looked at on the heat map and on our call volume for some of our- call volume for some of our engines and truck companies, where they respond to a lot of fires, and having four people on a piece of equipment allows for that two in and two out immediately. This would require fifty-four additional firefighters, taking us from eighty-three to one-hundred-and-two, and moving us to .73 per thousand.
Chief, what would be the cost of adding the squads, the fourth firefighter, and the future stations?
I think I refer back to the memo that was sent. Thank you. I think we're looking at about thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen million dollars to do that. That also addresses a new fire station, if you look at the bottom, down in the south part of Fresno. As we have that industrial growth, it doesn't meet the current drive time, and so, we're gonna need to add a fire station down there, and we're proposing one with three, three on duty each day. And this is really hard to read, but you might be able to see it when you zoom in. This is the medical calls that we're talking about. Obviously, our difficulty breathing is our most common call that we go on, along with chest pain and heart problems. And again, we can have further conversation about that as we move forward with American and the right resource, and maybe changing the priority one or two calls. Any questions?
Chief, do you see the opportunity to add that fourth person to a couple of the stations that service the real condensed area of the heat map? Or would you, or you just mean that every apparatus would need a fourth person, or?
No, no, we're not, I'm not recommending every apparatus, but those where it makes the most difference, I think it's something we absolutely should consider as part of that global view of squads and adding additional firefighters on certain pieces of equipment. If you look at that map again, we're not asking to add, or the city doesn't need to add new fire stations necessarily, except for in that south area, and then we propose some longer, you know, future out in the west, I'm sorry, in the east. We have stations, we build stations to prepare for the future, and most of them can house two, or sometimes three pieces of equipment. And so, we want to maximize those efficiencies and park the appropriate piece of equipment, or add the appropriate number of firefighting force, you know, to maybe really stretch that dollar as much as we can, but also really deliver the best service possible. When we talk about the squad concept, it's not something new to the fire service. It's just timing, and we had, we have to, you know, rebuild from the recession, and we can't just jump into squads when we didn't have the right pieces of engine and trucks that we need to deliver the service in the city. And so, as we add those pieces, I think it's the right, you know, at the right time, with the right amount, it's important to place those squads to really enhance our medical service delivery. It's a much more efficient tool, we've talked about that over the years, but it's-
So, Chief, I'm sorry, the squad concept, what does that mean exactly when you say that? Is that, is that what Councilmembers Gabrielle and Brandon are suggesting is a squad concept?
Yeah, again, you know, this is a, this, the utilization of a squad is a two-person piece of equipment. It's a small SUV or a truck, a small truck, that can respond to medical emergencies all day long, keeping the engine and our truck, big truck, parked, prepared for those fires or rescues, or hazmats, or whatever it may be, more often. That doesn't mean they're not gonna go on medical calls, but it's a good augment to the system. It's a much more efficient tool for, you know, mechanical, but it also adds to our minimum daily staffing. And that is critical when it comes to growing this department as funding becomes available. It's important that we do that in a very measured way. The decision also has to be made as we work with Loc. 753, is, you know, what's the best staffing model for that? Some may say it should be a paramedic. Some say it doesn't need to be a paramedic. Looking at the data, let the data and the science drive how, how much does a paramedic make a difference out there at the call? So, I think those are all factors we have to take into consideration as we make this, as we look at this option going forward.
So, what's being suggested, since you called it the squad concept, it's something that happens in other fire departments, other places? So, this is, it's not, okay?
Yeah, it happens in many other departments. The vast majority of them have a paramedic firefighter on that piece of equipment. That doesn't mean all of them do. In fact, in our own backyard, Fresno County runs a squad with two firefighter EMTs. So, it's not, there's all kinds of models out there. I think it's really what's the best model, and for the right reasons for our city, and when is the best time to implement that? My recommendation to you is there are a couple clicks and steps that need to happen before we jump to that, and there's a lot of drill down we need to do collectively before we jump to the squad, but I think it's something we absolutely need to move to when we can afford to do that and plan to do that.
So, Chief, I have, I'm still, so the 334 that we're, that we're budgeted for this year, that's proposed this year, that we would probably adopt, and I know you said we weren't trying necessarily to get to that number. What number do you think we are trying to get to? If it's not the 334, what's the number we're trying to realistically get to?
That's a-
And I'm gonna tell you, and let me give you, and I guess it's fair to let you know why I asked that question, so what I know is you said we have 311, and we're budgeted for 334. Well, if we're not gonna get to 334, we literally are funding something that we know we're never gonna hit, and there's a delta there between 311 and 334, and for firefighters, I don't know, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars a year, whatever it is these days. You know, that's a, that's a couple million dollars that, that really is just unaccounted for, you know, in these, in these proposed positions. What do we, what do we do with that money? And that's why I'm asking, if, you know, it's, I'm all about, you know, telling people what we really need the money for. If we really don't need it in positions, what do we need it for, and why don't we put it in the right, in the right place? So, that, so just, that gives you, I want you to know the backdrop as to the reason why, why I'm asking. What is the real number of positions that we need, and the delta between what we really need and what we, where we're at? What are we using that for?
We're using that to offset the overtime and shift replacement that we incur every year by making sure we have people in every position, twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, for the overtime that we incur by having, you know, training that has to go on. That covers that delta. And if it wants to be called something else, then vacancies, that would be a policy call.
What, how much do we spend, so how much do we spend a year? Okay, well, last year, we spent one-point-six-eight million in overtime. I'm just looking at the line item. This year, we're proposing one-point-two, which is a little bit less than, a little bit less than what we actually spent in one point in seventeen, but in eighteen, eighteen, when it says amended, does that mean that's what we spent, nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand? I'm probably looking at Jane on this one. When it says amended eighteen, Jane?
Actually, I think the number, I know we had one-point-two million budgeted, but how much did we actually spend? I think it was considerably more than that. It's, hold on just a minute.
Two-point-four.
Two-point-nine.
Two-point-nine.
Yeah, I think it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two, two and a half to three million, but some of that overtime, I understand, is connected to OES calls. I'm sorry, Office of Emergency Services, and so, some of that is reimbursed, and so, some of the actual cost that shows up in that line item isn't really connected to service calls within the city, it's connected to service that they provide to the firefighters.
I guess, and thanks for that, for that clarity, clarification, so what, but I'm assuming what we see on the actuals and the budget is what we actually spend, right? Not what we reimburse for?
I believe it's both. Is it? We can get you clarification on that.
Sure, and again, the, because I just think, if the truth of the matter is, if what we're spending in overtime is two-point-four, two-point-five million dollars, then why don't we ask for that in the overtime budget, instead of putting it in personnel costs that we aren't, that we don't really intend on filling? And that's why I'm asking, Chief, just, just, listen, if you really need two and a half million dollars in overtime, because that's what you think it's gonna be, I would rather we budget that than saying that we're gonna hire three-hundred-and-thirty-four firefighters that we know we're really not gonna hire.
Okay, what, what I believe I'm seeing, actually, sorry, actually, what they call their overtime is actually minimum staffing pay, so that's what you'd have to look at on the line item detail to actually see that, because the vast bulk of the overtime, which is fifty-one-one, three-oh-one, is actually OES reimbursement. So, the minimum staffing pay, though, is what they use to, to, to cover for those firefighters that are on vacation, that are off sick, that, that, what have you. So, that's what the chief is referring to, is actually the minimum staffing pay, and as you can see, that runs anywhere between six-point-seven to, I believe, three-point-seven million per year. And so, that's what, that's what that savings in those vacancies is actually used to cover, because the actual amounts of those are actually more like six million, it's not three, because we know that we have vacancies up there, and that's because those firefighters want their overtime. And so, we have to have a minimum staffing pay in order to cover those shifts, and so, we budget those vacancies, and we use that to supplement the minimum staffing pay, because you can, as you can see, the actual costs are actually more like over six million, but we only budget three, because we know we've got the other three up in salaries.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, Jane. You know, if the real, I'm okay with knowing what the real cost is, I guess, if we don't have to do, and it was, the term gimmick was used earlier today, we don't have to do that, we can, I would rather the chief just say, hey, I'm gonna spend six million dollars in overtime, because that's what it costs.
Then, then the option then would be, we can do that, and actually, councils in the past have, have asked that question, but that would mean that we would actually have to cut those firefighter positions.
Well, she doesn't need them.
That would mean actually going out and saying we're cutting sworn positions. We may not be doing that, but that would be the, the public face of what we would do. The actual staffing would not go from, and I agree.
I got you.
I agree.
Let me be honest with you, we need, we need to just tell the public the truth, right? So, I'm good with that. Whatever the truth is, is okay. If we don't need three-hundred-and-thirty-four firefighters, and we don't have any intention on hiring three-hundred-and-thirty-four firefighters, and we actually need more money for overtime, then let's say that. I think we're all big people up here, we can, we can justify that, but it's hard to justify if we know for sure we're not gonna get the 334, and we're moving money back over there to pay for overtime. Well, let's just call it overtime. So, I'm gonna have to chew on that for a minute. I'm all about just saying what you need and asking for what you need, and I think that we're generally pretty supportive of what you all need, and we try to, we try to get you there, but this feels weird.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, one other thing that should be pointed out is, one of the thing that we've been holding those vacancies for, recently at least, is the North Central issue, because that contract is coming up again, I believe, at the end of this year, I'm guessing, I think?
July of nineteen-
Yeah, July, and we will be negotiating with them. In fact, we're, I believe, already taking steps to do that. And so, if we cannot come to an accommodation with North Central, then those firefighters will have to come back into the city, and so, they will need positions to go to, and that was one of the things that we were, were using to, to, kind of a placeholder, to wait for those individuals, whether or not they would need to come back.
And that's fine, too, but, you know, again, this has been kind of the evolving answer, right? So, I get it, I would, just like I said, I would rather have just, hey, we need money for overtime, I get it, I don't have any problem with that, that's what we need to run the department, but on the one hand, you know, we're never gonna hire three-hundred-and-thirty-four officers in this, this year, because we don't have any intention to, and we're gonna sweep the money back to pay for overtime, let's just call it overtime. So, anyway, Council President, thank you.
And I think what, at least what I'm hearing is that we, and we still have a couple more opportunities to discuss this further and be able to have, you know, some one-on-one meetings, maybe to, to better understand some of the, at least, some of the line item detail of the budget, and figure out how we want to move forward. Again, I think for me, I understand, you know, in terms of the desire for overtime, I get that, but I think what I also wanna make sure, in my perspective, when I'm telling the story to my residents, really, how many true positions, and I think this goes for all the staffing across the city. I don't want you to feel that we're picking on the fire department, because I think it goes true to police, right? We need to make the best effort to fill those positions, because what our residents are clamoring for is staffing and presence in the neighborhoods, in the community, better response times, and the only way that we're gonna get there is if we have the appropriate staffing levels. And for me to be able to tell the true story, I need to have the actual numbers that do reflect, you know, how many folks are out there.
Sure, I understand what you're saying, under, just, I hope I was clear. Adding firefighters, if you're, if you're not gonna put them in the field, can only go so high in the relief pool, and, and that's not telling your residents, hey, we're adding firefighters. What you're doing is you're adding firefighters, true, to fill vacancies when people are off sick, injured, on vacation, et cetera, which does reduce overtime, and that's fine, but I hope, I would hope that our goal eventually would be to fill all of those, you know, positions as funding becomes available, and increase our minimum daily staffing. You know, I'll give you, I'll kind of close with this analogy. If you think of your seventy-seven firefighters on duty each day as a football team, that football team is playing both offense and defense all day long. There are no subs on the side, like you would have on a, on a team, and so, they run calls all day long, and the same people are running those calls, and they're getting burnt out. And so, when you add to the minimum daily staffing, you create kind of a relief, a sub, people you can pull off the sideline that can help respond to some of those other calls. And so, that's, that's, that's our goal, and hope that we grow in that fashion.
Perfect, thank you so much, Chief. So, I'll have my staff circle back with you, because I, I'd like to better understand in terms of the ideal and how we get there. I know that we won't get there with, with this budget, but incrementally over the next years, and when we start getting creative about additional revenues, then we have a true story to tell. We'll go ahead and, City Attorney, and I think what we'll do, we'll end it with the City Attorney for, for today, and next Tuesday, we'll hear the City Council offices and Mayor's and City Manager's office, and have any further discussion. I know that, maybe get some updates on some of the, the things that we've been discussing, like the ten-million-dollar issue that was discussed this morning. Hopefully, by then, we have a little bit more update to be able to discuss. City Attorney?
Yes, do you have the PowerPoint? Yes, Council Doug Sloan, City Attorney. Jumping to page two of our slides, of our slides, this will demonstrate that we kind of changed what we had before. It's no longer an org chart. What we're showing is that the City Attorney's Office provides legal services for, of course, every department, every part of the city. And then, as of last year, we divided into three units in the office instead of two, when we added more resources into code enforcement. So, we have litigation, code enforcement, and then transactions. Turning the page, just a few highlights from the current fiscal year, a lot of transactional projects- A lot of transactional projects got completed or we're in the middle of working on it. We've gotten defense verdicts on a number of trials. And one, one thing you all don't hear about is the number of cases that get dismissed on motions with the court. We've gotten a number of those. Criminal prosecution is way up. When you add more police officers, they're going to write more citations, and so that's more work for us to do too. In addition to Lori Donaldson, who is our main prosecutor, we've had to supplement that work with litigators in the office to go cover. And also now, the Superior Court is splitting up the misdemeanors into two different courthouses. So we can't be in two places at the same time, so that's going to require more time from our litigators to go cover those cases too. Public Records Act requests are exploding. We are reviewing several million pages of documents a year to make sure the right things go out. We are, right now, I think, providing about 10 PRA responses a day. And we have to write up a formal response, we have to review the documents, state the objections. We're in contact with you all when there are requests. Right now, we have three paralegals and lawyers involved in almost purely responding to PRA What we thought we would do then is also go ahead and combine this presentation with our asset report for the quarter, since it's, it's kind of rolled in together. And this is on, we're working together with the manager's side on this too, in DARM. Of course, asset, we are, we have been very aggressive in going after slum lords. We've gotten several receiverships. And one thing you may not know is that in addition to the real receiverships we get, we get a number of other compliance agreements with just the threat of a receivership gets compliance. And then we follow up on those to make sure the work gets done. We have 17 active cases involving 371 units and about 5,800 violations. We've cured about, or caused to be cured, about 4,700 violations and brought into full compliance over 480 units. So that's a lot more affordable quality housing in the city of Fresno. We've recovered costs of about $200,000. I think that's a combination of DARM and our office. Also, so at this point, the asset unit in the City Attorney's Office is fully staffed with three lawyers, a paralegal, a legal secretary. And then also, in last year's budget, you added legal investigators and funding for law clerks. And I think that's worked out really well. We have Erin Martin and Homer Montelvo, raise your hand. They are investigators. Homer is a former sheriff's deputy here in town and Erin was a former lawyer in Ohio. So they bring a really good background to investigations on behalf of the city. Also with the law clerk program, that's worked out really well. We have San Joaquin law students. Whitney Hendricks, is Whitney here? Whitney stepped out. She's also a professional baker, so if you need cupcakes, she does a great job of cupcakes. She's using that to pay off her student loans. Grace Zilith, Grace? Jeremy Matthews, Jeremy isn't here. And Jennifer Winbui, who is out studying for the bar, taking the bar in July. They've worked out really great. They handle a lot of the non-asset code enforcement. Where the, the really serious things that come up in council districts, wherever it may be, that doesn't qualify as asset, they take care of those things, usually through the administrative hearing officer. Sometimes it just takes writing a letter, doing some research and getting ahold of the owner to get something cured. On asset, I wanted to give you an example of some properties we're looking at, if you'll turn to the photographs. There's a property of 4538 East Hamilton. Here's an example of what we deal with. Conditions and some multifamily housing. If you'll just step through the slides. See mold, people are living there. I don't know if that mouse is alive or dead. Oh, halfway? Okay. So that's an example of what asset is dealing with. Those are the kind of problems we're really going after, trying to solve as many of those kinds of problems as we can right now. Yes. That was an occupied unit, wasn't it? Unfortunately, yes. So if you really want to know what asset's doing, that's the kind of target that we're looking for, and we're trying to resolve as many of those as we possibly can each year.
Hey Doug?
Yes?
So is, is asset firing on all cylinders? Are still a couple of, if it's an eight cylinder engine, are we on eight cylinders? Are we on six cylinders? Is there more capacity to do more work? Or are there any holdups that are stopping additional?
On the legal side, I think we have a little extra capacity right now. They have staffed up on the administration side in DARM. I know they've been doing a lot of training lately. So right now, we have a little extra capacity in our office. What I've asked our people to, to do, to the extent they have any extra capacity, to go out and just investigate things and follow through themselves too, to keep them busy. And also, we are focusing on maybe some tenant landlord education at the same time.
So are we spending, so when you find one of these places where you just, like the photos you just showed us, are we processing those through, getting on to other cases? Or is there bottle jams or?
Kelly Woma, on the staff side?
I don't know what side, I'm just asking. What's, what side do you mean? Your, the City Attorney's side or, well, you guys all work together.
Yeah, typically, the inspectors may be out there first, or they may be out there with an investigator. And when they go out and they document the problems, then they write up a notice and order typically of all the problems they found. There, there are different approaches you can take with a notice and order. We could focus on the significant health and safety issues, basically the things you saw there. Or we can take the approach when we're out, if, as long as we're there, write up everything we can. And I think the, the former is the, or the latter is the approach that we're taking, and that can take a little bit longer than to get it written up, get it served, and get it to us. So it's a matter of policy, which approach you'd like to take. Whether you would rather be very thorough with each property or focus on the big issues and handle more properties.
And right now, we're being more thorough with each property.
I think that's the approach, yes.
Okay. But, well, I would prefer to handle more properties. But, but, but we're not, we're not understaffed at any level on your, on the attorney's side? We're able to handle all the cases that are, that come before us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's good. I might come up with another couple of questions, but I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then, next slide. Requests for legal services. Much of the work we get is when the staff writes up a request for legal services, that's sent to us along with a contract review, a request to amend an ordinance or something like that. RLSs don't include litigation and maybe some projects that come directly from mayor manager or possibly council members, that kind of thing. Over, since 2014, we've gone from reviewing 1,371 RLSs to 2,160 for this year. So the work has gone up quite, quite a bit. I think Brandon in our office is setting a new record. He will be doing about 600 himself this year. He's sort of our high-volume public works, public works department, keeps us very busy, lawyer. So that's just, and it shows the, the breakdown with the various departments, basically how busy they are keeping us. Looking at the authorized positions, this is the same as what was authorized last year, about 40 positions total. The Mayor's proposed budget also includes some extra money so we can hire four law clerks instead of three that we had in the last year. Impacts, I, I've touched on this, significant impacts to the office. PRA's, PRA's are occupying the time of people that used to do other work. It used to be one person can handle PRA's. Now we have about three and a half people committed to handling PRA responses. Because of that, we had to convert a legal secretary position into a paralegal position to help review those documents. And as you know, with PRA's, we have a very short timeline to turn around. It's typically 10 days and you can get an extension for more, but even then, we have to turn things around quickly. We don't really have a choice. Personnel matters have increased with the increasing number of employees and managers and so forth. We've had more work for Personnel Department. Personnel work is very expensive to send out. That's some of the higher, higher hourly rate work. So we converted a litigator to a personnel lawyer, so we have three personnel lawyers now. So that means there's less litigation we can handle in-house because of that. It, it is possible in the future, once the rental housing inspection program is fully implemented, they will probably inspect properties, find violations, and if those violations don't get timely fixed, it may get referred over to asset. So we're anticipating that too. As you've seen, we, land use litigation is becoming more prevalent. We're having to have our transaction lawyers be concerned with managing the land use litigation, that CQ litigation, that sort of thing. Like I said, with more police officers on duty, the more municipal code violations, and that requires time to respond to that, we're anticipating, and there's nothing specific in this, on the cannabis, both the regulation, regulatory side, and then enforcement. I think we understand that if we're going to legalize it, you have to bring enforcement efforts against the ones that are not doing it legal so that the legal ones can thrive. At some point, that may require resources too. But nonetheless, no matter what it is, we're going to provide the highest quality legal services.
Doug, are you concerned, are you, are you in those cannabis conversations?
Yes.
So, so you, you're gonna, on Thursday, when we have a workshop, you're going to be able to project cost to your department?
I, I can estimate it based upon the timing. I think the earliest this would hit would probably be next calendar year. So I think we've got a while to figure that out.
Thank you.
Contract council costs. Since 2011 through now, our outside contract council costs have remained almost level for that entire period. And that's really amazing because I, we have more litigation now and hourly rates for outside council have gone up during that time period. Some have gone from $158 an hour to $300 an hour, yet overall, we're maintaining those costs fairly level. And I think we owe that largely to Francine managing our outside council, doing a good job of that. And then finally, we have proposed some options. The only options I would ever want to propose for council to consider adding to our office would be one of two things. Either it's actually cheaper to spend money in our office and save money overall, or you want to expand or change the type of services that we're being, that we are providing. We have proposed that you could save about $100,000 a year if we actually added a litigator and a secretary for that litigator, because that total cost is easily less than $200,000. For the same amount of work to be handled by outside council would be about $400,000. So to be safe, I'm estimating $100,000 savings by adding a position in the office. Outside council, even at 250 an hour, 1,600 hours of work would be $400,000. And then if you desire more or additional code enforcement resources to help with things maybe that aren't asset, other types of things, then we're willing to work with you on anything you would like to add there. That's all.
Councilmember Brenda?
No, I'm good.
And so these are the, I think, the three things that you outlined in terms of options were not included in the budget, but are potential options for us to build the capacity.
That's correct.
And may potentially save because if we do have additional litigation, we would have to do outside council, is that what you're saying?
Right. It would be cheaper to keep that work in-house.
Well, what I'll do, I'll, I'll make a motion to fund both the legal secretary and the litigation attorney to be able to increase the capacity of resource.
I'll second that.
And then we can have the discussion later, once we go over the motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
So that will conclude our budget hearings for, for this day. We will continue with the two remaining departments, which is City Manager and Mayor's Office and then the City Council offices next Tuesday. And any additional, obviously, motions that we want to discuss. Thank you.